Yes.
I'm gonna call. Got it. I gotta press got it now. Like to call the meeting of the East Windsor zoning Board of Appeals for Monday, November eighth, twenty twenty one into order and to a roll call. Ruth Ann, you wanna run through? Get my agenda out.
Want everyone who's here, commissioners first?
Yeah, just, just.
Okay.
Call, call every commissioner and then.
Okay.
That way we know for the record whether they're here or not.
Okay, so Jose Diner.
Here.
Steve Smith.
Here.
Nolan Davis.
Here.
Mystica Davis.
Here.
Kurt Krebschow.
Here.
Robert Yaski.
He's, he's no longer with us.
Okay.
He's no longer, literally.
Literally, I'm sorry. I have an old list, obviously.
Yep.
Okay. And how about Ray Noble? I'm nervous because it's my old list.
Dan Noble.
Okay.
I think it's Dan, right?
Yes.
Yeah, he's.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think he's here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we, so what we have, we got four regulars and one alternate with us?
Yes.
Okay, so we could, we got, just to wait, just to let the applicants know what this is, or if anybody's new, what we're gonna do is let the applicants present their, their, their application and then followed by commission questions. And then we'll have public, any public input. And after that, we will close the hearing and if people are inclined to vote, we'll have a, a motion and then a discussion and then, and then a vote. According to state statutes, you need a four to one vote to pass any variances, you know, it's, it's a super majority, three to favorite, two against and the, and the very, and the, and the variance would fail. So just keep that in mind for applicant's sake, that if it's a, it's a close vote and it's a three to two vote, you're it's no cost for celebration. So with that, actually, we'll, we'll, I guess we can still have the pledge of allegiance. And even though it's virtual, I, I, as a flag, I can lead it. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible liberty and justice. Okay, so new hearings, we, is our, who's our secretary? Is Mystica or who's the secretary? I forgot. I just see vice chairman on there.
I think it used to be Tom Telemini.
Is it? Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've noticed one, so.
What is it for Manhattan? We should try.
Okay, so let, just in the interest of time, the legal notice, do you have the legal notice there, Ruth Ann?
So I have. Am I gonna read it?
Yeah, just read the legal notice, please.
Okay.
For the record.
So the new, the new hearing is ZBA twenty twenty one dash five. Applicant owner, town of East Windsor, request for twelve variances on property consisting of sixteen single-family homes located on South and Phelps Road and more particularly described as MBL oh four two twenty oh five three A one zone, variances to section four oh one, East Windsor zoning regulations concerning bulk and area requirements being sought for sixteen individual zones as described below. And there's a table with the standard bulk requirements. The A one zone and the variants requested. And that's it.
Okay, who's here representing the applicant? Anybody?
Yeah, I can, I can speak.
All right.
I'll start and then Ruth Ann can jump in. So most of you, we, we spoke previously, my name is Mike Damato and I, I work in the planning office, so I'm been working with staff and, and the first selectmen on this project for what will be coming up in a year. I, I sent you, hopefully you received a copy of my staff report and I'll try to hit the highlights so that you can, and you can ask me any questions that you might have, but basically the town is currently the owner of a property which is a, a former federal government development, which was constructed in the nineteen fifties. It consists of sixteen single-family homes on roughly four acres. It was then, it, it sort of then morphed into a property that was managed by a nonprofit and for a number of years, that's how it operated. There were income restrictions and so it's considered to be deed restricted. And then upon foreclosure, the town became owner of the property because the nonprofit went defunct. So the town owns the underlying land that these sixteen individual units, which are owned and occupied by East Windsor residents, sit upon. The town is obviously not set up to be, nor does it desire to be a landlord. The development was not constructed with that organization and operationally just is, is not a good thing for the town to be, to be the, as said, the landlord for these properties. So, so we've been working through the process of doing what needs to be done to essentially divest the, the land on behalf of the town and go through the subdivision process to then have a more traditional development where the, the homes will sit on standard or what you think to be traditional lots.
Hey Mike, could I just interrupt you? If, I guess we're having some, some, I had a request that if people that are not speaking, please mute yourselves, so because we're having some bleeding into, in the background. And then when you want to speak, just unmute yourself. Thank you.
So where we are now is because East Windsor has more than ten percent of deed restricted affordable housing, which is a target percentage that's set by the state. Through the last legislative session, the affordable restrictions were removed from this property. We are now at the point where we are pursuing the subdivision process, but again, because these parcels are essentially four times what will, what equates to being four times the density of what's allowed in the underlying zone. We can't go through the subdivision process because we cannot create compliant lots. They are non-conforming in, as far as bulk standards, twelve ways, which we have identified in the table, which is part of the legal notice. So the, the goal here is to, we have sought variances for all sixteen homes which are again sitting on one parcel so that they will all have the same standards. So someone isn't gonna have a different front yard setback from the person across the street. You're not gonna have a different side yard setback if you're looking to install a shed. We wanted to create uniformity within the development, even though there is literally no other properties in East Windsor that are like this. So we didn't want to, to create inconsistencies among the sixteen units for a number of reasons, both from a, an enforcement perspective, a design perspective, but we also want to create a, a, a community for the folks that live there that is usable. So the variance requests that are before you tonight have been derived from looking at the most non-conforming aspects of the property and using that as the request. So that way, everything becomes conforming and there's some buffer in there so that if somebody wants to add a shed or they want to install a deck or they want to put in a, some type of improvement, there's a little bit of flexibility there. Because as a homeowner, when you own your own property, you, you plan for those things and we wanted to have some of that. The last thing that I'll, I'll mention is that we are asking for variances tonight. We are, we do believe that because this property is, number one, was built by the federal government, what, number two, was then conveyed to a housing authority or, or a, or nonprofit, and then number three was then foreclosed on by the town and is four times the density of any other property. And I think may have actually been built before zoning. For a number of reasons, we think it's unique and would meet the strict level of, of granting a variant through demonstrating hardship that you guys are required to, to find. But also, I, I've outlined a case called Adolphson versus the Fairfield zoning board of appeals, which essentially mean it says that the, a ZBA can approve a variance without looking for a strict demonstration of hardship if the ZBA feels that it will result in a reduction of a non-conforming situation. And so because this property is moving in the direction that the P O C D and the zoning regs envision, even if certain things are still non-conforming, because it's gonna be a reduction in the non-conformity, you don't need to find that same strict level of scrutiny. And so with that, I will stop talking and you ask any questions if you haven't.
Okay, uh, thanks, thanks, Mike. And, and I gotta say, I was the planner in East Windsor when the, the feds first gave up this property and, and it was a good idea at the time trying to provide some affordable housing that would be perpetuated. We, the nonprofit agreed to, again, the town wasn't in any position to administer that, so we did find a nonprofit and unfortunately they, you know, they just couldn't, I guess they couldn't sustain it and, and, and for, and basically had the property foreclosed. So it certainly is a unique situation. This was built by the US Army, which doesn't have to follow local zoning rules. They, they've had a number of these, I think at the time they were divesting themselves for, of a number of these type of, of, of bases, excuse me, well, I closed my door, I just turned some, my son walking in. So in any case, yeah, I, I I guess my, my only question that I would have for, for you is how, how do you, do you, do you feel we have to make individual motions or one motion? How, how would you?
I think that, so even though they're individual homes, they're all known as one map block and lot, so it's still one property. So I think that as long as you indicate in your minutes or something that you understand that you're, you know, maybe you just go through and discuss each one to make sure that you all agree that they're appropriate. If you come up with some type, situation where you're not all in, in unanimous on one of the specific variances, then I think we would probably want to split it up. But if you feel, if the, if the board feels that all twelve are either, they're comfortable or not comfortable, then I think that it would be pretty clear. And I, and I did provide a proposed motion and I can share my screen when you get to that point for you guys to look at, just because this is a little bit complicated.
Sure. That would be helpful, I can't.
Do you want to put the table up, Mike?
Yes, I got, I got, I got the, yeah, you can put it at the table. I got it in front of me, but.
Ruth, do you want to do that or you want me to do that? I don't know if I can as the not, yeah, I'm not.
Well, I could give you. Making.
Okay, let me go around and see if anyone else does any questions at this point, so I'll, I'll call on the individual members. Nolan, do you have any questions at all?
Not at this moment.
Mystica, any questions?
Not at this moment.
My reminder, you're muted when you're not talking to. Steve?
None.
No, no questions. How about you, Kurt?
Um, just one. Uh, do, do the residents have a say in this? Are they gonna come back and, and oppose this or anything like that?
Very good question. So the very, very, very beginning of this process started with a community meeting where all of the residents were invited to attend the first selectman's office, myself, the town attorney and Michael Santoro from the State Department of Housing all attended and we explained this to them. We educated them on the process. I believe Jason Bowser informed them of this meeting, so they have been kept in the loop, sort of as we've been moving along and understand what we're asking at various stages as far as what needs to happen. Because ultimately, this project has to be you know, something that works for them too. That's the whole goal.
Okay, and I suspect there may be some, I mean, there's gonna be a public speaking and if they want to speak up, there might be some residents here who, they want to speak also at the hearing. They, they would have all, I assume, got notices and.
They all did, yes.
With the links to the meeting, so.
Right, well, thank you, Mike.
Sure. Anyone else I haven't called on from the, from the board that, that has a question at this point? If not, I will open it up to the public. If you, you know, if you can use the raise your hand feature, it'd be great. If not. Oh, well, anyway, I, I think it's not just because I stopped talking, so if any, anyone has, anyone from the public want to speak, you could either use your, use your, raise your hand feature or just if you're on video, raise your hand. And I'll see it. Okay, I don't, I don't, does it, do you see anybody there with them?
Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, we might get.
Wait a minute, Jerry, Jerry did, hang on. There's a Jerry there.
They're gonna mute themselves and.
Okay.
Right. Who's, who wants to speak?
Jerry, it's Jerry Rudolph?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jerry Rudolph, Eleventh South Road. We've been working with the town on, on this for over almost five years, maybe a little bit more than five years now. And this is really the culmination of five years of hard work by the town. Jason Bowser, Bob before him and the residents over here. And I think that it's, that would not only be beneficial to the residents over here, but for the last several years where the town has been collecting the rent, they've been responsible for everything outside the roof lines of our houses and it has cost the town many thousands of dollars, which I'm sure the town would be glad to get rid of. The end.
Hey, anyone else who's to speak?
I, I have a question. This, this is probably for Mike. Um, how will this prop, how will these properties be, I guess, labeled for the future? So say fifty years down the road from now, you know, these specific properties have these new specific, you know, boundaries and, and special treatment, I guess you could say. How are people, our predecessors gonna know that? Is, there gonna be a certain label assigned to these specified?
Yes, that, that's a good question and, and there's a couple of things that will happen. Number one, they will ultimately, the next step, if this application is approved, will be that they go before the, the, the plan, the town staff is gonna have to take a subdivision plan which will ultimately be filed in the town clerk's office. And the subdivision plan will lay out the extent of the lots and the property lines and setbacks. But one of the things that is included in my suggested condition is that the, the certificate of variance will be incorporated into a variance plan to be filed in the land records and that such certificate and plan shall include sufficient language ensuring that the variances granted clearly apply to all, to each of the sixteen individual so that we're creating a tray, a sort of a breadcrumb trail in the land records. So when title searches are done, properties are sold, people look at refinancing their mortgages. It will be very clear to them that this is not a non-conforming situation.
Right, and that, that, yeah, all variances need to be recorded in the land records. So that's, that's how, you know, a hundred years from now, the people will know that the, the story, hopefully will know the story and, uh, behind how these lots were created. And, uh, and in the minutes and everything get filed with town clerk. So there'll be, there'll be definitely a paper trail for, for any title searchers going forward.
Mr. Chairman, Rick and Laurie, is it this, wanted to speak?
Sure. Go ahead.
Um, we're actually here for the second item on the agenda. I was just moving my arm before. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So is that it for this hearing? And I do have a hard, well, I, I have to temporarily leave at seven thirty to, to start another meeting, unfortunately, but Nolan, I trust that you'll be able to carry on. And I'll, I'll be in the room, but I just, I, I, I have to give my undivided attention to that.
So if, do you want to, me to share my, my screen? You can review the proposed motion before you have to leave.
So, so let's, 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 let's close the hearing. So do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion, motion hearing.
Second. Okay, if, if it's united, all, all in favor of closing the meeting, wave your hand or some, indicate that you're say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Looks like there's no objection. We'll close the hearing. So go ahead, Mike, and somebody can then read the motion.
Okay, so hopefully you can see it. If it needs to be made bigger, let me know.
Okay. Actually, I, I, I can zoom in on it too, at least on my, on my screen. So if somebody wants to make that motion, I, you know, chair, I usually don't make motions, so.
Just for reference, are we making, are we just saying the part that's under motion to approve down to right above reference plans or would we say the entire thing that's there? Just want to make sure.
I, the, the way that it's written, if you like what you've read, yeah, I think that, like, you can reference that there are two findings, you can certainly read them and that there, there's one condition, you can choose to read the whole thing if you want, but you want to at least reference the things that are numbered.
Uh, well, I would like to make a motion to approve the application number ZBA twenty twenty one dash oh five. Applicant owner, town of East Windsor, request for twelve variances on property consisting of sixteen single-family homes located on South and Phelps Road and more particularly described as MBL zero four two two zero zero five three A one zone. This approval is granted subject to the conformance with the application material, as may be notified by the commission in this approval and the following conditions slash modifications. Reference plans, conceptual subdivision plan, property of town of East Windsor, South Road, ten twenty two twenty one, prepared by J R Russo and Associates LLC, sheet one of one. The findings are number one, the board finds that the applicant has adequately demonstrated that the unique and peculiar characteristics of this property and development warrant the approval of the requested variances. Two, the board finds that the approval of the requested variances will result in overall reduction in the non-conformities on the property as supported by Connecticut Supreme Court case Adolfson versus Fairfield ZBA. The conditions are one, the certificate of variance shall be incorporated into a variance plan to be filed on the land records. Such certificate and plan shall include sufficient language ensuring that the variances granted clearly apply to each of the sixteen individual dwellings. The certificate of variance plan shall be subject to review by the town attorney prior.
Okay, thanks. And is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay, thanks. And that, and, and actually, since we're doing this on Zoom, I think it's good that we do a roll call vote for the record. So Nolan, how would you vote?
I vote aye.
Okay, Mystica?
I vote aye.
Get the vote ten times there. Steve?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so it's a five nothing. I, I don't think I missed anyone, did I? All right, so the motion passes. Congratulations. And with that, I will have to leave. I'll mute myself and stop my video while you handle the next, uh, agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, as vice chairman, I will assume control of the meeting here in Jose's stead. We will now move on to the next application that is before us. If somebody would like to read the notice on that one, that would be great. Should be on the backside of the front page that we have.
You just need someone to read it there, Nolan?
Sure.
Okay, ZBA number twenty twenty one dash zero four. Application of Hamlet Homes, Mark O'Neil, for variance request of forty five point eight feet where fifty feet is required per se, section, four oh one of East Windsor zoning regulations, eighteen Jesse Lane, map zero five zero, block fifty two, lot zero zero two dash one two, zone R three.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is the applicant here or their representative? And if so, please go forward with explaining the project here.
Okay, so for the record, Joseph Flynn, can, am I on audio? Yes, okay, great, thanks. And I'm from the law firm of Alphano and Flynn up in Southfield and we represent Hamlet Homes, the applicant developer. Uh, for general background purposes, the property under discussion is a fully constructed residential house located at eighteen Jesse Lane, which is a lot, lot twelve on the Harvest, is it Harvest View subdivision? Harvest View subdivision. Harvest View residential subdivision is a twenty-two lot residential subdivision. I think twenty of the homes have already been sold and closed. So we're down to two and this is a lot that we just finished and we, uh, the client went in for requesting a CO and there were some complications, so we have submitted a formal request for a variance, but there is some factual conflicting evidence, we should say. And so we may not even actually have a violation, but based upon some conflicting advice, we're not sure whether or not to proceed with the formal variance application tonight, although we're prepared to do so and it's pretty clear that the property does warrant and meets all the legal elements for a, a variance. There is some concern as to whether or not that is actually needed. So let me just build the record up for one minute. My rec, our, uh, application included four exhibits. Uh, they were numbered one, two A, two B, and three. Hopefully you got those in the package. So if you would look at two A, a picture's worth a thousand words and we can at least show you. if you would look at two A, a picture is worth a thousand words, and we can at least show you, uh, the dilemma that's being presented to, uh, your, the, the planning staff. Uh, if you look at two A, it shows the existing foundation on the, on the parcel and, um, Jesse Lane's a cul-de-sac. So if you look at the lower right-hand corner of the foundation, you'll see a, a line that's measured to forty-five point eight feet. That's a line from the southeasterly corner of the house to the outer edge of a sidewalk easement, which was part of the original subdivision approval. How many years ago was that? Ten?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years ago. And, um, we have an engineer who at this point thinks that that strict approach is what's necessary. However, the background of the subdivision is such that I don't think the applicant started building on this until like three, three or so years ago. And when, uh, we went back to the town to say, well, now we're going to start to implement the subdivision approval, uh, the commission, the zoning, uh, the planning commission, zoning commission, uh, deliberated and decided at that point in time that instead of a sidewalk easement and having a sidewalk there, that they would accept a fee in lieu of. And we have faithfully paid that fee with every closing. So, um, we believe that that sidewalk easement is no longer relevant in terms of measuring the setback. So in accordance with the, uh, East Windsor uh, regulations, um, the setback, the frontage setback is defined as a point, uh, thank you, a, a point that follows the, uh, normal course of access directly to the street. And if you look at, um, exhibit two B, I try to expand the measurements so they'd be a little more easier to read. Obviously, if we did that, then we'd be far in excess of fifty feet. In fact, we're in excess of fifty feet if you just take the measurement closest to the street, but eliminate the five-foot sidewalk easement would put us over fifty feet. Uh, unfortunately, when the ASBIL was submitted, um, there was a refusal to, um, grant the CO on the basis that the forty-five point eight obviously is less than fifty, and therefore, uh, the, the, the staff, I think rightfully felt that they were stymied from taking any action. So, um, I know you're a quasi judicial board and not a zoning board and not a planning commission, so it's not like you're here to legislate and give a presentation like Mike had just, uh, provided as a consultant to the planning commission, but, um, uh, we're in a little bit of a uh, conflict for time, and, uh, we're looking to understand why the ASBIL as submitted was denied showing the forty-five foot eight to the sidewalk easement and not considering the fact that the five-foot sidewalk easement is no longer in play, therefore giving us the fifty point eight. That was the first line of argument you want to make, because obviously your duties not only include granting variances, but obviously hearing appeals from denials. So, um, instead of going through the entire presentation of the variance, which we can do, but will be a timely presentation, uh, we were just, I was just trying to consider whether or not the, uh, the board could give some guidance as to whether or not, um, in accordance with your own regs, the line for measuring a frontage setback would be from the house along the access to the street line and not to a sidewalk line, and therefore would obviously meet the fifty feet. And therefore also avoid having to even consider a variance. Problem is, is you understand, there's been a lack of continuity with personnel, and therefore we've been under, and also quite frankly, with a fourteen-year-old subdivision, you have different regs at different times. So we are in the middle of our own engineer and uh, the planning staff as to what needs to be done. So that's our first, our first set of questions to you as to whether or not, uh, something could be done expeditiously regarding the denial of the CO. Otherwise, it's, uh, you know, would have to do the formal variance presentation and, uh, show how we meet all the legal elements for that. So it's a little bit unusual, uh, uh, situation for, for a ZBA hearing. I, I understand, but, um, I just wanted you to understand the facts that we've been confronted with.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Ruth Ann, I have a question here. Pertaining to what he was just speaking about, is that something that we can do? Um, or are we strictly trying to grant variances here tonight?
Well, the application before you is for a variance. Uh, I believe you can appeal a decision formally and get on the agenda to do that as well. I will explain how I went about, um, I received the ASBIL drawing. And, um, what I do when I get an ASBIL drawing is I pull out the approved subdivision and the maps that were used when the zoning permit was issued. Um, and I have that. It shows that the house was to be built fifty point five feet off of, and typically, um, setback lines are on property lines, right? Um, to the, to the back to the structure. Um, so the permit application was approved to be fifty point five feet off of the setback line, which is also included in that map. And so when the ASBIL came in, the house was into that setback space, the forty-five point eight feet away rather than the fifty point five that was in the original document. Um, and also the plan itself came with a zoning fault requirements block that showed the variance notation below that there was a variance. And that there was, you know, encroachment into the setback and a variance was warranted. And so that's how I based my decision, how I concluded that in my ministerial power, I could not sign off on zoning for the CEO.
Okay.
Okay, so, well, thank you. I, I don't, and I didn't want to put Ruth in on the spot either, but I just, so I just were trying to get clarification as to if an ASBIL was presented to the street and instead it said the easement area, would that be sufficient?
I'm sorry, was that too?
Oh, I don't want to directly address Ruth Ann. I would have to, I'm going through the chair.
Sure, sure. And Ruth Ann, if you'd like to answer that, you, you may.
Setbacks are from the front property line. Front property, the line back fifty feet. I, I, um, you know, they're, they're drawn onto the plans that get submitted for zoning permit even, and, and, uh, they were drawn onto this plan as well, so.
So.
I don't, I, and I don't believe setbacks are measured from an easement boundary.
Correct. Okay, so we can use the street line?
Property line.
Okay, that I, I, now I understand what you're saying. I'm sorry, I was slow. So, yeah, the property line is in terms of my vocabulary, would be the same thing for our purposes. Okay? So if you take it from this property line or the street line, then it would be over fifty feet.
I don't.
Well, I would have to see that. Beg your pardon?
See that. I would have to see.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
It looks as though on the ASBIL that that forty-five point eight goes all the way to the hard line around Jesse Lane.
Oh, um, again, I'm just relying on the engineer. So, I, I, I'm, it was represented to me that he would only draw the forty-five point eight, which is the outer edge of the easement. I'm just representing to you people what he's telling me. And that the, um, if you look at it again, exhibit, um, two A, that, um, the easement is five foot and, uh, maybe I'm, again, I could be reading it wrong. I am not an engineer, but, um, yeah, it says here on the, on exhibit two A, it's forty-five point eight measured, uh, to the backside of the eliminated sidewalk. So therefore, maybe I made a mistake, but I assumed that what this engineer is representing is true, and therefore, if you measured it to the street, you're over fifty feet. But I understand what Ruth Ann is saying. She's willing to do it from the, uh, the street line and.
Property line.
Okay, so is there a difference between property line and street line?
I would, see, I'm not, there's, there's easements, then right of, there's parcels, part of the road that would be land owned by the town, the right of way of the town.
Mark, I can't be just. Ruth Ann?
Yes.
It's Steve. Can you clarify for me so I, I understand? I can read the math on the map. The property line is defined as the hard black line that the street of the border or the easement back from the sidewalk.
That I'm just looking at now to see if there's a legend on this map.
The print on this exhibit, I apologize, is rather small.
I'm just looking for clarification because I'm hearing two different terms. I'm sorry, I don't understand the difference versus the, what is the strict interpretation of property line?
I'm trying to find the right.
Um, one of the, uh, sheets I got on, online, and I didn't make it as an exhibit because it's part of the public record. I just want to inundate you guys with too many exhibits is the, uh, uh, zoning definition of setback, uh, as a parallel line. And, uh, are these right off the regs or this? These are your regs that we got off the, uh, computer. So as to, um, the, as to the line parallel to the front property line quotation, street line, end of quotation, at a distance equal to the required front yard. And then they even, um, incorporated, uh, a change for cul-de-sacs. Um, because as you can imagine, it's a little more difficult when you have a house on a cul-de-sac because there may not be an exact uh, straight line, uh, perpendicular uh, line off the cul-de-sac from the access. So they said, uh, uh, for lots located on a public cul-de-sac turnaround or outside curve of a public street, the lot for frontage may be measured, uh, from. So, um, I, I'm just looking for confirmation that it's the street line and, um, uh, which respectively, uh, I'm not trying to be confrontational. In my opinion, in terms of title, would be the same as, uh, the property line and the, um, and what is owned as a, in the lot are the same thing because we're talking about an easement, and as you know, an easement does not convey title, it just conveys use. So the P, the lot here extends to the street. There was a five-foot easement, uh, but that has been terminated because the applicant has paid in lieu of that. But so, um, we're just trying to confirm for our engineer that East Windsor uses the street line, which in this case would, uh, go over the area, the five-foot area that was utilized for a sidewalk easement.
Can folks see my screen?
Yeah, very good.
Okay. So here's the issue we're looking at. From here to here. And so, zoom out a little. This is the fifty-foot setback line. In the side yard, the fifteen-foot side yard, the fifty-foot setback.
Yeah, so that our engineer did that ASBIL, and he chose the nearest point on the street from the corner of the foundation. So that was one issue which I felt was contrary to the East Windsor regs and two, because your regs talk about a line parallel to the front of the property, which is basically in this case, the driveway. Do you see the paved driveway area? That line from the foundation to the street is in excess of fifty feet. So I just, as an applicant, legally, constitutionally, you, you just, you can't have vagueness. You're going to have to say, okay, we're going to measure it from the street line, which in this case I think is equivalent to the property line, and we're going to use, according to our regs, the line apparel to the access, which is what your regs call for. And I think what our engineer is saying, well, okay, if you can get the town's blessing, then that's what I'll certify off as, as an ASBIL. Bon, can you get any smaller? And if this, if your board is uncomfortable with that, that kind of guidance being provided tonight, uh, we're more than ready to um, proceed with a, uh, the full variance presentation because we meet all the elements and, uh, we can certainly get that on record. I was just trying to make it a little easier, but I obviously didn't succeed because I'm, uh,
Is the, I, I have a question. Is the fifty-foot setback on the original set of plans?
The original subdivision plan?
Yes, yes. So if the plans were already in existence prior to the start of the development fourteen years ago, those plans were presented at that time, correct, or were, were not?
The plans were approved, but they were amended over time.
Okay, when was the last date of amendment?
Uh, well, the, when we went into, uh, uh, asked the board whether they wanted to set the sidewalks or fee in lieu of.
But the, the.
That was seventeen, I believe.
But the fifty, the fifty-foot setback was on that amended plan already.
Fifty-foot setback is, is, um, as far as I know, has always been the setback number.
That's fine. It's the fifty-foot. I understand the fifty-foot distance. My only question is, on the series of maps, to call out for that specific property, did that exist before the house was started? To call out for that specific property, did that exist before the house was started?
I, I, I cannot answer that because I don't know.
Can I help?
Yes, please.
The map that was submitted with the zoning permit application shows the fifty foot setback. Shows the house being, um. At fifty point five feet.
There wasn't even a number on it.
To there. That's the proposed location, um, on a map that was dated September first, twenty twenty.
Oh, the big one.
And that was prior to or after the easement was changed or terminated?
It was changed in seventeen or eighteen. We, you know, before we started building, we went to the town and said.
So my quite, my question is if the map existed with the easement already approved. If you're telling me seventeen and eighteen, the easement was terminated. And the plans were submitted September first, twenty twenty one, construction of the house began when?
Twenty twenty, they were submitted.
Okay, the plans was submitted in twenty twenty and the house started when?
I don't know what, what she's looking at. There's been four different.
I, I don't know the data. The permit maybe Ruth Ann has the data, the, uh, building permit that you used to, to begin the process to get permission.
So this layout is, uh, and I'll take a picture of it.
So my, so I guess my question is if things were amended and things were updated relative to prior to the start of that property. Did somebody screw up the start of the, where the house was supposed to be built in the first place? Because I see, I see a fifty foot setback line on this map, the existing house, and you're off by a couple of feet.
Yeah, well, how come I don't have a map that shows fifty feet?
That, that, that's my question. If I looked at the history of the map.
Mr. Smith, um.
If you go to the original subdivision map, you'll find that that line goes from there all the way front to the street. From there all the way to the street.
I understand what the applicant's saying. So the line on the subdivision map. Is not drawn to the nearest point on the cul-de-sac.
It goes all the way to the street.
It goes from the foundation to the street edge. That's my exhibit one. Original subdivision approval shall setback line from street, not rear of sidewalk. So that's how you got your fifty feet. It's actually fifty point eight, but.
Okay, the property, I, again, Ruth, Ruth Ann, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I, I'm kind of confused as to.
What is it?
I see the forty, I see the forty five point eight on exhibit one. And I see a solid black line. And then I see, uh, plus two hundred and three point nine degree. Uh, a plus sign with two hundred and three point nine. I'm guessing that's an exhibit. One, I mean, I see a lot of arrows and I see forty five point eight and then I see a fifty foot setback. Um, so you'll have to pardon me as I read all the, the jargon. I'm not a land engineer. I can read the measurements.
Yep.
But the question is, did the house as built encroach on, in among the existing plants? Or is this an interpretation of the five foot setback is what I'm hearing versus. A property line is defined as what? From the easement back or from the street back?
That, that's what I'm trying to reconcile.
Well, I'm trying to reconcile too. I just want a clear definition from a, from a regulatory perspective.
The front yard.
Yep.
An open space extending across the full width of the lot between the street line and parallel line setback. A distance equal to the front yard requirement. Corner lot shall have two front back, front yard setbacks.
Okay, then the fifty yard setback that's curved appropriately. It's short. That's what, that's what I see. I see a fifty yard setback as the map goes around. On the subdivision around the cul-de-sac, there's a cliff fifty yard, uh, fifty yard, fifty foot, excuse me. Setback for that line. I understand where the engineer drew it from. But if the existing information was on prior amended maps and it's clear, again, was the house built in the wrong spot? I'm, I'm not clarifying it.
Yeah, I am trying to send a picture of. The map so that I can. Just not syncing with my email. Here we go.
I apologize. I'm just trying to understand.
Absolutely fine. I just wanna. If we can, can you still?
Oh, oh, I see. I see what you're saying.
This is what was submitted with the zoning permit application.
I can barely, oh, hang on one second. Hang on, I gotta blow up my. This was submitted with the.
All I can do is pull it from the file and look at it when I get the as-built in and.
If, if she's got a fifty, if she's got a map that was in the town's route, that's what's submitted, correct?
Yeah, if it's part of the public record, I'm not gonna, uh, so I'm like, excuse me. I'm not going to disagree with a map that shows it's fifty point five oh feet to. The appropriate line, but then, then there's no.
This is not an as-built. This was what was proposed for the zoning permit. So this is what I prepared the as-built two. All right.
I got it. Yep. Now, um, can I just clarify the exhibit that's on the screen? Is that line to?
That looks like it's the street line. That's the hard line.
That's the, um.
That's the hard line.
Hard line, yeah.
So you're within. So it requires a variance.
Well, that's not an as-built.
Not the as-built. This is, this is.
That's the.
Permit application.
If that's the permit application, that's the expectation. That's what it will be, be built to, correct?
And that's what it was, that if you use the street line, what I'm trying to show in two B, although. Mine's colored and yours isn't.
Yeah, but I, excuse me, sorry, Mr. Flynn, but.
No.
What, what I, what I see is the fifty foot point five. Lines up with the numbers underneath because I see north twelve fifty eight minutes, fifty seven or twelve point five, fifty eight, fifty seven east.
Yep.
And that's the hard line as far as I'm, can see if I'm looking at both diagrams, correct? That's big black line. Without the easement, that's what's on the, that's what's on the application.
Yeah, are you asking me if that's the line?
That's what I'm, no, I'm telling you that's what I see. I'm not asking. That's what I see. That's what I see for a comparison.
I, I see that. I see that line. I'm not sure if that line's to the street line or that line's to the easement line. That's what I'm seeing.
Right, but. It's, it is clear because it's the hard black line on your, one of your exhibits and that's the application, correct, Ruth Ann?
Yes.
Okay, then I, I don't see what the, I would say we require a variance.
Okay.
I, I don't mean to make this hard and drag out anybody's time.
No, 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 no. It's, you're not, you're not. You actually helped. So we were trying to see if. Based on the actual fact, which. An as-built would show if it was measured not to the nearest point, but to the point in accordance with the East Windsor regulations. That is a point parallel to access. If that line's over fifty feet, which it is, which you see on exhibit two A, would that be acceptable? And then you can avoid the whole variance thing.
I understand.
If no one wants to get to that point, and I'm not saying you have to by any means.
No, I, I, I think we should just follow the process correctly because again, this is the application. That's what's on the map. That's what I would have expected the house to be built to with that fifty feet.
And you got it. The house is built that way. I'm letting you know that. I'm letting you know that now. So we'll, we'll go through the variance thing, but I'm letting you know that now. So that during the variance presentation to say, oh, since your house is fifty feet from the street. Or actually a little more, then you're fine. Because the house is more than fifty feet from the street line.
Then why am I seeing forty five point eight and fifty point, fifty point five and two maps on the same spot?
Because my understanding is that hard line is to the. Outer edge according to the, what is printed to me on this exhibit. You guys probably can't see it, but. I should have, I should have enlarged it. What is represented to me from the engineer and I didn't draft this or do anything to it.
Right, but I, I have a large screen and I'm looking at the, one of the maps you supplied.
That's not an as-built, Mr. Smith.
Okay, it's not as-built. We're, I don't see the as-built then. I apologize.
As-built is two A and two B.
Yeah, I can put it on the screen.
Yeah, well, um, two A and two, two A is a smaller scale, two B tries to blow up. There you go.
Perfect. Yeah, that's what I had up. And I see the, the.
Yeah, so on the red, well, you don't have the red, but.
I don't have any red.
On the exhibit, um, that was given to me by the engineer. It says the forty five point eight is measured. I can't, uh, measured angle to backside. Of sidewalk easement of eliminated sidewalk. That's what that says then.
She doesn't have your exhibit up. She has the as-built up.
Says, yeah, well, um, I, I've submitted a two A and a two B, um, which is what I'm reading off of. And, and then the, um, a yellow line, which is a line that. Yeah. Yep.
That one?
Yeah, that's one that has a lot of small little figures in it, which is gonna be hard for you guys to read, but. Oh, good. Yep.
Just tell me if I need to.
Now, Ruth Ann, is that my two A or two B? What's gonna really help the board, I think, is two B, which is that little area, but exploded so that.
That's your application. That's not gonna be on that. Bear with me. I just did this. Is it this?
Yeah. It's overblown, huh? Sorry.
It's okay. You wanna look at this one or the next one?
No, no, the one above that. Or below it. Yeah, well, let's just go with that because I don't want it. You guys are. So anyway, in my exhibit two B, there is. Printed language and it wasn't done by me. That shows a line. From the southeast corner of the foundation, same starting point is the forty five point eight line. But a line that goes from that point to the outside of the. Street to the street line and that line is measured to be fifty point eight. And when you take the line and from the same starting point. And, and draw that line in accordance with your own regulations, that is according, much closer parallel to the access line. The actual distance is fifty two point eight feet. So I just don't want you to start off with the assumption that this house wasn't built. With the fifty foot. It was. According to this exhibit I've provided, which is coming off the plan. I don't know why. It's pretty big writing on two B. I don't know why you don't have it.
Is this two B?
Um. No, because two B doesn't even have a foundation on it.
Oh, is it that one?
It's just a bloat now. It's just, that's, okay, so, um. Okay. Well, um. The fact is that town does not have an as-built that shows, um, fifty feet. Drawn in accordance with your own regs. That's our fault. That's our fault. Uh, we could submit that.
That would be helpful because again, I'm comparing what I see for lines and I'm going, eh, this doesn't line up.
Yeah, um. I'm going by an exhibit that was provided to me where I said, hey, blow up the area so the board can see. That if you measure it. The way you're supposed to measure it, which is accordance with their regs. Not to the closest point in the street, but to the point from the southeast corner of the foundation to the, um. Fully parallel to the access, you're well over fifty feet and, uh. My fault. I didn't download the exhibits properly so you don't have this thing I'm waving at you right now, which shows that. Be that as it may, I just don't want you starting off with the assumption that the house. As defined by the East Windsor regulations. Is not at least fifty feet from the street line. It's not fifty feet. If you use the easement area, you're correct. It's only forty five feet. But if you, if you define as I think, and I don't want to put words in Ruth Ann's mouth. The street line and the property line are the same. Then, well.
Cause I, if you're.
That's fine, that's fine. And if you are uncomfortable with that, then we'll proceed.
So there's this dark line, right? Property line. And then there's the, the cul-de-sac line. Cause you're saying, take this, take this measurement and move it out to there.
What would the sidewalk be here? Is the sidewalk here or is sidewalk here? It's a easy question. Sidewalk here or sidewalk there?
Sidewalk is, that's to the back edge of a sidewalk right there.
That's the back edge of the sidewalk?
Correct. You take.
That dark line?
Yeah.
And what's in front, what's, what's around Jesse Lane? The sidewalk itself?
That's the current one.
Don't, don't, don't get me, is it, is this the, where the sidewalks would be?
Correct. That's where the sidewalk would be.
Okay, so it's being represented to me. That the forty five point eight feet is to the outside edge of the inside, well, inside outside. To the edge of the, uh, of the easement line. And that, um, if you measure. A line in accordance with your regs from the foundation along the axis of the driveway, because it's a cul-de-sac. The angle changes and we're, we're, uh, depending where you want to put the line. It's either fifty point eight or fifty two point eight feet. It's, it's kind of important because that's the evidence we'll be presenting and, um. So we're, you, can you understand all the kind of a pickle where we're asking for a variance where we believe that there's. No need for variance. It's just an administrative. Um, interpretation over your own regs. That, that, that's what I'm trying to get at. They mean the foundation's where it is and. I guess I can get an engineer to. Draw the line to the nearest point of the street or to draw the line in accordance with the regs. That's what we should have done, but. It would have been clearer to you and would have been clearer to Ruth Ann and she probably wouldn't have had the problem she has now, but, um, and I don't blame her.
Ruth Ann, I'm gonna ask a question again. Can you bring back up the, uh, plans, the application plan?
Let me just make this bigger.
I don't know what that is. I don't have it.
I'm not sure that's.
But if it's in a records, it's public record. I don't know what that is.
I can show one that's different than that.
But that's not an as-built.
No, it's not an as-built. That was.
Again, to tell you something, I've gone through five.
It doesn't matter how many you've gone through. We're trying, it's not relevant. I don't want that in, it's not relevant.
So the fifty point, the fifty point five, Ruth Ann, can you expand that map a little bit? So the fifty point, the fifty point five, Ruth Ann, can you expand that map a little bit, please?
Uh, larger?
Yeah, so I, so I can see the, the nomenclature on there. Go, yeah, go a little bit larger. So what does, no, no, what does, what does, sorry? What does the? What is the center line with the squares on it? What does that represent, please? Uh, it's between the twelve and the forty-one.
Right. I see. I'm just looking for the.
What are these blocks? Are they markers?
They look, they almost look like, they might be monuments.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the fifty point five to, is that not the mon?
That's the line with the monument. Right? So that's property.
So that's property line.
Right? Yeah.
So monuments is property line. Then I'm completely unclear as to why the forty-five eight is. If it's on the application to the property line at fifty point five feet, and I'm looking at any submission that's on the as-built existing that I could see, it's forty-five point eight to the property line. What am I, please somebody clarify what I am missing between fifty point five and forty-five point eight to the same line?
Okay, just a couple distinctions. One, the fifty is not an as-built. Number two, if you draw the line from the foundation.
Dude, I, I got that to the end of the road. It's fifty point five or fifty-two point five.
Fifty point five, fifty-two five, according to your regs.
That is, this is a utility easement here. It says it right there. It's the.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Steve, look at the, um, left hand, lower left hand corner of the map that that's on the screen. Yeah, see where the thing says.
Okay, okay. That's fine. I just don't, I don't know what those lines mean. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I, I, I thank you very much. That's.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Underground utility.
Okay, but then there's a line that I see fifty feet.
Okay.
Yep, that, that, that's fine.
Got to take it to the utility line.
But Steve is correct in that if you take that fifty foot line and draw to the property line, it would be like fifty-five point five. Is that what you're saying, Steve?
No, I'm, what I'm saying is I see on both maps that line, and I see it drawn out to that line. And then I see a fifty point five, um. Ruth Ann, can you do me a favor and zoom? Uh, make the map section bigger, so I can see more of the map. Nope, sorry, the other way around.
This way?
Yeah, so I see the corner of the house, three-bedroom house, fifty point five. And then I see a radial. The Xs mean the line with the Xs in the center on the bottom mean what? What is that? Yeah, right, right. What, you ran over your cursor over the one with the X. Yes, the center line with the Xs. What is that? Is that the street line? Is that where the street starts runs? Yeah, exact exit.
Well, go to the, um, if you go to the as-built within.
Yeah.
If you go to the as-built, you'll see that the catch basins for the road, yeah, go up, go the opposite way.
This way?
Up right there. Stop, stop. Um, shit, I can't pro, um, scroll down just a little right there. See this line right, right there, right there where his cursor was? That there is the yard drain that is in the yard. Okay. And if you follow that out two spaces to your right, kind of go to the right.
On to, yeah, is the street.
Right there. Those are the catch basins that are in the road. That right there is the road. That's the road right there.
Talking about this delta right here.
You see that? That's the road. You're.
Yep, I got that.
Follow that down. Keep going down. Keep going. Right. So now my interpretation, by the way, uh, as, as, you know, I'm not the brightest bulb here, trust me, is that in your regulation, we're supposed to measure straight from the house, the corner of the house, straight out the driveway, straight out the driveway to where the street line is, which would be greater than fifty feet, or just say it's fifty feet, just to make a number. As you start going back from the street lines, you're getting into quote unquote, the easement, the sidewalk. So I don't know how to explain this, that, that the heavy dark line is to the utility easement. The, the lighter line to the left of that is where the sidewalk is that, that five foot right there is a, is a, is a ten, it's actually ten feet, to be honest with you. Um, is that easement line?
Right here is the sidewalk easement.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
So then why was the point taken from the utility line to the corner of the house at forty-five point eight feet?
Oh, my God. Yeah. Now we're getting into the semantics of a different town planner, and I didn't want to go there and, and Mr. Flynn doesn't want me to go there.
Okay, that, that's, that's fine. I, I understand it. I'm I'm obviously not a, I'm just a person serving on the board. I just need to clarify.
No, but Steve, you, you, you have helped us show that the forty-five point eight one is not to the street line.
No, it's to the utility line.
To the utility line. So I don't know why that's even relevant. So.
That's kind of my question then.
I know. And so if you add, if you extend the forty-five, put it, the, the, the forty-five point eight to the street.
Or an excess of fifty feet.
It's five foot wide, um, at that point, um, easement. So you're in excess. That's what.
Okay, so then my question ultimately becomes, I'm not a town planner. I'm not a land use person. I understand what I'm reading for, for dimensions. My question is, I'm going to let the town, I'm going to let Ruth Ann answer the question. The property line starts where? Under East Windsor Regulations, Ruth Ann? At the street or after the five-foot easement?
Well, the.
Does my. Let me, let me ask it this way then. I'm, I'm, I live on a cul-de-sac over on Tramblyn. If I measured from the southeast corner of my house to the road, is that my property line?
Not necessarily.
Okay, then what is the property line as defined in town regulations in layman's terms, please?
Well, number one, would we say property line?
Well, you use property line. I heard road line. I'm here to discrepancy of both terms that I don't understand.
And we're contending they're the same.
Yeah, but I want to understand coming from the regulatory enforcement office.
If I, I don't see property lines being at the same as the edge of the road.
Okay, then what is a property line?
It's a legal description of your property, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, but I, I don't know. I don't know what that is unless I go onto Google Maps or I look on our, on the GIS website. Then I can see the property lines.
Well, you gotta go by the legal description on the land records. You can't go by Google Maps.
No, 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 I know, but I'm, I'm a Realtor in prior experience. Okay, so, but I go to the town G I, I go to the town GIS website.
So on the legal description on the land records?
Yes, please.
It's going to include the easement because easement is not ownership, it's use.
Okay, that I understand.
Okay. And if you look at the subdivision that is as-built, everything is graded to the street line. We don't grade to the easement line and then, oh, maybe something, it's gone. So we grade right to the street line. Every house is graded that way. So it was obvious to me based upon your regulations when you said property line. It, it, it corresponds with the property description on the land records, most importantly. And two, the way it's eventually graded, I wouldn't, you could have a better argument if the sidewalks were in. That might be a different argument, but they're not in. They're gone.
Okay, Mr. Flynn, I don't need to put you on, but I want to hear what.
I'm sorry.
Ruth Ann has to say as to the regulatory enforcement, please.
Yep.
Here's, um, lot line is defined. So I apologize. Can't look under property to find a property line. Lot line. Okay, so it says division line between adjournment properties or a public street.
Okay.
So, you know, if I'm looking at this map.
Uh huh.
Do we show it?
Uh, isn't it, isn't it? Isn't it the inside double line? It's no, hold it right there. Nope, go up a little. Go up a little. See where the catch basins, he defined the catch basins earlier?
There.
There, right there. That's the street line. That's the street on the map unless I'm missing something.
That is correct. That is the street line.
Yeah, okay. So.
We, we agree.
So is there five feet between the street line and the utility line?
Yes, there is.
Then it's fifty, it's over fifty feet. I don't have a problem with this then.
Yeah, so that, that's instead of going through the variance, that's why I was just trying, and I, I thought I'm not trying to put Ruth Ann on the spot at all. She's coming into this after this thing's been.
Yeah, fourteen years. Go ahead, Ruth Ann, please.
And just, you know, I'm looking at what was permitted and what was submitted as the as-built and so you know, there's a lot of nuance.
What's the nuance?
The nuance is.
What's the, please.
Where, where the setbacks being measured from.
Where's the setback?
Edge of road is, is what folks are saying now, which I have been going by property line, right? And I did just read the lot, lot line.
The line does say up to the road, does it not?
It says separating the road from, from the, yeah, between properties or public street.
Okay, so is that property accepted by the town? Is that road accepted by the town by now?
I don't think so.
I don't know. I, I can't answer that. I don't know yet.
Usually do that after the last closing and then, uh, send the deed to the town attorney.
That, that's fine. Um, I, I just have. But if I'm hearing up to the definition for a lot line, what am I missing if it goes up to the divide? It's the two millimeters between the road, if there's no curb and the lot and the, and where the grass ends. I'm not trying to make this simple. I'm trying to keep this as simple as possible is what I'm saying. And when I hear nuances, what is the nuance, Ruth Ann?
Oh, just, you know, for me personally, where the, where I would be measuring the properties from and then the sidewalk.
But there's no sidewalk, I thought.
Right, right. That's nuanced. If it's on the plan and, you know, is that something I would? No.
But if there's.
So.
So if there's no sidewalk, there's no easement, or sorry, there's, there's, there's still an easement of five feet. If, if I were to take a surveying tool.
Yeah, and don't measure this and.
What would it?
To there. I hear what you're saying.
What would it be measured to? I'm not a surveyor, but if I put a line straight up on the house and I took it from where the road intersects the property, would I not take that measurement from there? Up that, up that point?
Yeah, if, if that's the parcel, if that's where it measures out, I mean, I'm not trying to be stubborn on that. I just, it could be that, that there's property along here that belongs to the road, or maybe it's just a right-of-way and it's all to the house.
Is the road paved?
Yep.
Jesse Lane is paved.
Yes. Okay, then you could theoretically take a measurement from the intersection of the road in the end of the property to the corner of the house, correct?
And that is consistent with your regs, by the way.
Then I, I, I'm of the opinion it meets the criteria. Unless I'm missing something with those points of views, I'll, I've done enough talking and I'll turn it over to my fellow, uh, board members for some input.
All right, uh, Steve, I think that was a, a good point to make there. Um, I'm also kind of under that same belief. Um, is there any other, uh, comments or questions from board members?
Well, your guidance has been great, but I still think there's an obligation on our part to give Ruth Ann something that shows fifty point eight or fifty-two point eight.
Whatever the number is.
Whatever, you know, I mean, we have to give her something better.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that because that forty-five point eight to the center of the utility line is.
It's misleading.
Very misleading.
Yeah, so.
So if you.
My thought was going to be with your permission to continue and then have the, our engineer do it right and give that to Ruth Ann.
I'm fine with that. If we could see just the revised plan, I'm, I'm fine with that because again, that, that forty-five point eight goes to the utility line and not to the, the appropriate point on the print is what I see.
Yeah, I should have done a better job by, uh, labeling the lines.
Nolan, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, sorry. I was just going to say, are we saying that we should continue this meeting?
Yeah, because, yeah, I, I don't want to, uh, well, because.
Well, I think it's a good idea to, to have everything proper and in place, um, you know, before we make any sort of official rule.
Right, right. So I would, I think the ball's in our court to get the engineer to do the as-built in accordance with your regs. And again, he's going to sign off, so I want to make sure what he's representing to me is distances are fine and they don't end up being forty-nine point eight or something. But if he's what he said it is on the exhibit that I failed to give you guys, fifty point eight and then actually fifty-two point eight, then Ruth Ann sees it in a different way, and I think we've submitted what we should have submitted.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think that's probably the appropriate thing to do. Uh, so Ruth Ann, how would that work exactly?
I believe a revised as-built will be submitted.
And so we'll just continue the hearing and.
The hearing open.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll leave the hearing open until a future date is what we're saying, when that is submitted.
Yeah, then if it's, uh, the CO is granted, then I'll send a letter, uh, email to, uh, the board saying take, take it off your agenda.
Okay, uh, Ruth Ann, uh, so did we make an official, uh, motion to, uh, what is it like suspend the meeting or to postpone?
I think you leave the leave the hearing open.
Okay.
Um, and you could say till your next scheduled meeting and then, um, if something happens in the interim, where if the applicant withdraws.
Okay, well then I will, uh, I will ask for someone to make that motion, if you'd like to do that, Steve.
Oh, you're going to ask me the really hard question now. I make a motion to leave the public hearing. The public hearing open until eighteen Jesse Lane Improvement Plan has been appropriately updated, reflecting the correct dimensions, uh, instead of to the utility line, make it to the road, uh, the appropriate road in accordance with East Windsor regulations.
I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor, uh, please raise your hand or say hi. All right, it would appear that the eyes have it. And we will, uh, hold this meeting open until, uh, the, uh, till Ruth Ann, I guess, sends out another email telling us that we have the appropriate documents or, uh, you know, this has been resolved in another way. And, uh, I think we'll, we'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, well, we thank you for your patience and your time.
May the public speak now?
All right, sorry, um. Ruth Ann, what are your, what are your thoughts on that? We should let them speak now or hold it until the next meeting? Because technically the.
So you guys voted to continue the hearing to the next?
Yeah. So would it be appropriate to have public speaking now or we wait until the the next meeting? That's all I'm asking, just like.
Right. Right. Yeah, I think you'd have to wait till the next one.
So we can't even ask a question?
I don't know if you guys can open up again, like you know what I mean, you'd have to vote on that too.
Okay, not sure what to do. Okay, um. Do any of the other board members have a issue with opening a meeting for a brief question and then closing afterwards, or well, and then holding it open again, I just, I would like to do this properly.
Can we not suspend this part of the meeting then allow for public and then come back?
Yes, actually, I believe that's probably the best option. Okay.
I make a motion to suspend this part of the meeting for discussion on eighteen Jesse Lane for public comments.
Do you need a quorum to that or can we go ahead now?
All right, we'll vote on that, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So now we are temporarily reopened, right, for public comment, so now, now you guys can go ahead.
Thank you very much, hello and good evening, my name is Rick Zetkus and this is my wife Lori Zetkus, we're the prospective purchasers of eighteen Jesse Lane. Learned a lot about regulations and zoning tonight, but I have a very simple business question, which is from a timeline perspective, from the time that Joe Flynn and Hamlet Holmes submits revised paperwork for the built-as piece of it till the next meeting to review, what type of timing are we looking at, are we looking at you're not meeting again until a month from now, or is it going to be revert, reviewed internally once you receive that paperwork and then Hamlet Holmes and the town of East Windsor will go forward with the inspection in order to be able to issue a CO?
Uh, Ruth Ann, do you have any thoughts, process for that, will, will we have to have another formal meeting again, or is that something that can be worked out between the applicant and the office?
If the applicant withdraws, that kind of, right, before the close of the public hearing? Kind of that, that would end the cycle, otherwise you'd have to meet to officially close. But if I get a revised as-built in that I'm able to sign off on, I do that, I could do that administratively and then it moves on to the building official.
So from a timeline perspective, if Joe Flynn and Hamlet Holmes were able to provide for you the new as-is-built blueprint tomorrow, not saying they are, estimated timeframe for next steps?
I would review the plan and for zoning compliance, sign off, that can happen within a couple of days and then it would go on to the building department from there. Then I'm assuming that Attorney Flynn would be submitting that, you know, request to withdraw the application for variance.
Which means then the town can inspect in order to approve a CO?
Yes, that's how that timeline would work.
Okay.
Does it seem like something realistic within a two-week window or does that seem unrealistic?
Um, well, I don't, you know, I don't know all the pieces and parts, you know, like what, what's in motion, so I don't want to promise you a date, but for me, if I get an as-built plan, I'm heading out to the site and reviewing the plans when I get them and then I'm, I'm one step in a series of events, you know, so the building official comes next. I don't know where he's at with inspections on your home.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much for letting us talk and ask our questions, appreciate it.
I jumped the gun before and then didn't remember.
Okay, so thank you for being with us and thank you for those questions, um. I guess we would now officially close or keep this meeting open again, right?
I make a motion to open the meeting back up to eighteen Jesse Lane discussion and keep the meeting open.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is official, um, so now, now I believe we need to now we move on to the next, to the other business, or do we need to officially close anything else out?
No, I think we can move on.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to item number five, other business, is there any other business before the board? Seeing none, so I will move forward to item number six, public participation. I believe we've had our public participation, but if there's anything else, no, seeing none. Uh, we're gonna move to item seven, which is approval of the August second, twenty twenty-one minute. And if another board member would like to make a motion, I would hear that.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August second, twenty twenty-one.
There a second? All right, I see a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries and the most, the minutes are approved. All right, so I believe that is the end of what we're planning to accomplish tonight, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
There is a motion to adjourn.
Okay, a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, I will call a end to this at eight forty PM and I guess our next steps, Ruth Ann, would be to wait for a email from you about what our, you know, next movements are here, so.
Okay.
I guess everyone should be on the lookout for that. Otherwise, we'll, we'll see all of you at the next meeting.
Good night, everyone.
All right, good night.